Yes, thank you again Chairman. This application is for extensions of existing dwellings. I would like to recommend it to you for approval. Showing the live land, that is the application site down there at H5 called Red. It's on 16 Bul Lane. You can see up here just about where this high street goes to the centre of the village. This is Bul Lane then come down, takes a right turn. This is the building there at the end and then continues along the front edge of the application site here. Beyond that then there is Methodist Church and the Methodist Church Hall here. At the end of the carriageway, you've then got the footpath that runs through the southern side of the application site. On the other side then is Sowne and on the other side of that is the recreation ground. The application site is within the San Francisco Government and it is also within the conservation area. Just bringing back some life then with the aerial photograph. That's Bul Lane coming down this way to its right, as I mentioned earlier. That's the building. This is the application site here. Bul Lane comes from there and down here in front of the Methodist Church and that is Church Hall. And then this is the footpath that runs along the south, adjacent to the stream and on the other side, the recreation area here. You can see on the existing application site that it's already got one rear extension here of the gable end. It's also got an outdoor swimming pool here. An outdoor I'll show you later, just aside. And again, I've forgotten which end it is, but it will be considered tucked in there. So, looking at the current proposal. What it involves is the removal of that conservatory that I mentioned here to provide a second two-storey rear extension with gable feature. And then on the existing two-storey extension here, there are further extensions coming up to the rear. This is a single-storey link here to use primarily as garden room. But then there is a two-story element beyond that here to provide additional bedroom accommodations. And then across over on this side, the swimming pool is removed, the outdoor is removed, and then there is a large single-story flat-roofed extension to provide the main recovery school and also gym area. Looking at that in more detail, this is the existing ground floor and again, very briefly you can see the main elements of the house here. That is the two-story gable feature rear extension. That's the conservatory. That, um, that's the swimming pool. That's the outdoor that I mentioned earlier. That is the first floor, or again, first floor confirmation here, main part of the building there. Then this is the proposal that is in front of you this evening. So, main part of the existing building there, the existing rear extension there. This is the single-story link element here to use as a garden room. And this then is the two-story element beyond that. This here then is the new two-story extension of the gable feature. And then across here is the new flat-roofed, single-story extension of the swimming pool and also the indoor gym. First of all then, the only thing to point out here is that's the flat roof of the garden room link. That's the two-story element. That's the flat roof ceiling roof of the swimming pool and gym area. Looking at the extension, sorry, looking at the preparations. This is the existing rear. See the two-story extension I mentioned? You can see the conservatory. And then across, behind the Methodist Church and its hall, you've then got the outdoor and then this swimming pool is tucked in behind the outdoor and down the wall here. A proposal to consider this evening, first of all, there's the new gabled two-story rear extension there. There's then the single-story link beyond the existing gabled rear extension. And I'll show you inside now, using the two-story element that's forward of that. And then across to the left and south, you can see the outdoor store that has been replaced by a mystery which comes with the swimming pool and the gym. We look then from the south. And this is the existing situation, the main part of the house there. That's the existing rear extension that I mentioned. That's the conservatory. You can see here that we've now got a new second rear extension there, which you can see there. You've then got the single-story link there. And then you've got the two-story element beyond. But I must stress, that is at the other end of the house, beyond the existing rear extension or beyond the new one that I've shown you here. And then again, you can see the flat roof, what the new extension is about, the swimming pool and the gym. Looking then from the northern side. This is the existing situation where you've got the main house, the extension, there's the outdoor and beyond that. But then, what you've done is the main building here, the extension there, another extension behind that. Then the single-story link for the garden room. And then the smaller two-story element further down the middle there. And just to show you some photographs, apologies for the angle on this one, but so you can appreciate existing live land. So, two-story extension, then the conservatory. So, this will be extended out a single and then double story. That would have the new double-story extension there. And then if you come round to the right, you're seeing that in a different angle, the existing extension, so a single-story link here and then two-story there. And then this will be replaced by another gable-ended two-story extension in this location. And then swinging the camera around to the left again, looking across now to the Methodist Church and its hall, that's the existing swimming pool and that is the existing outdoor element, both of which will be moved to make way for the proposed single-story facility at Conwy. So, the key issues for members to consider this evening. First of all, the design that I've shown you and its impact on the, first of all, conservation area and then secondly, on the adjacent existing building. Then the impact on any residential amenity. I might say a solid bit of the impact regarding impact on trees. So, if we look first of all at the design and the impact on the conservation area. The conservation area is the boundary roughly what you can see coming down here, then heading off this way. So, the conservation area is here and then comes across the stream to the recreation area there. As members will be aware, as planning authority, there is a special duty on the council to ensure that character and repair to the conservation area is preserved or enhanced from any damage. It has to be accepted that the collection of extensions that I've described to you are large, they are extensive. But they have been assessed thoroughly by your officers and we are of the view that despite the bulk and the extent, that the location of them and the screening that is available to them means that they do actually have a real impact on the conservation area as well. It's like demonstrating that with us in photographs. Showing first of all, the impact here at the front and then secondly, moving around to any impact from that side. So again, we look from the front here, then we look from the south and all of that is within the conservation area. And we could start the journey by coming down Bul Lane here. And the listed building that I mentioned there, the ten, there's an install that is prominent within the conservation area. Bul Lane takes the right turn, I mentioned. So you can see the application site there, across to the right. If you move now to this position, that is the application site. That's its front carriage. That is its garage behind the Methodist Church and its church hall. The view we're expressing to you is that as far as the proposals in front of you this evening are up there, there is no detrimental impact on the front and public parts of that conservation area. If we move then to the rear, this is the footpath now at the south of the site. It's a keen view that's often used by a lot of people moving to a military or towards Bul Lane and the allies. The application site is just about in there. It hasn't shown a very lot of lighting this evening, but the application site is in there. This is a summer view and the advice we're giving you is that that is well screened and therefore the scheme has unlimited impact as well from the application. That photograph was actually taken on a bridge, footbridge over the footpath, or over the stream, sorry, adjacent to the footpath. I have myself walked a couple of times up and down the footpath. Also on the lower ground with the application site. Again, all the screen and boundary means you don't get much of a view of the application site in there or a reduced impact from that. Different situation if you move to the winter. The photograph is taken from what has the same position there. Clearly, there is now less screening, but again, as I mentioned, the footpath, the key point is lower, which means you get less of a view. What you can see from the bridge would be the new gable feature extension here of the same materials as the existing ground. You don't feel that that has an intentional impact. The single-story extension down here would hardly be seen and if you go across to the proposed two-story element set further back over here, then again, there is available screening for that and it is slightly further than that. And finally, another winter shot, again, the new two-story central bay, the single-story tucked behind here, plus the wider lower two-story further extension. We move down across over the bridge in the recreation area. This is a close-up view in summer. There is quite a lot of available screen there to see. And again, from this shot, you can see it running through there, but it is well screened to offset the impact. And this is the same view taken in autumn. I took this photograph, um, yesterday. Again, you can see the application site there, but given the distance, given the screen, that even in the autumn does offset the impact of the problem. We do feel that we could not mount an argument to you that that has a detrimental impact on the conservation area. And then finally, further back in winter scene, again, the extension of the bears I mentioned across this area here, given the distance, given the soft wind, you do not feel that that might not have a detrimental impact. So, if we then look at the impact on this building, this is the application site here. Let's not forget that it will be there. Again, as the conservation areas, when it comes to the setting of this building, the council does have a special duty to make sure that that concerns that city. Given the distance and given a lot of the proposals in front of you this evening, whether the single story or whether the two-story are tucked in behind the main two-part of the existing building, we don't feel that anything there has any impact on the setting of this building here. Greater considerations ought to be given to this element here, the single-story and two-story. But given the distance, it is 31 metres across here, given that it does, we see down in level here, given that it is set back from the boundary, given that it is slightly angled away, the impact that on the listed building we feel is not one that is detrimental. And then if we look at this aerial photograph, although it would be the same once again, as the listed building itself has already had an extension up to the rear there. And then there are also these other buildings here within this meeting environment. So, what I've just described to you down here in that context, we feel does not have a detrimental impact on that setting. Just to show you that more closely, this is taken from the rear of the existing building. That's the listed building there, that's the extension. Further back this evening, so again, bear in mind, the nearest parts of the collection of proposals in front of you this evening, two of those buildings will be down here just in front of the building. And then on the wider turn around there, making the same. We move then to our next discussion, which is the potential impact on residential amenity. No concern regarding anything here, again, focus on the same extensions here. There have been projections raised from neighbouring residents, but as I showed you on the elevations, there is no penetration here at first of all level other than one window. And that window is supposed to be obscured glaze and there's a condition recommended to you to ensure. So, given that, and given that, again, these extensions are away from the boundary, oriented slightly away, given the distances as well, if anyone sees us there, if anyone sees us there, the other means property, we do not feel that has an impact on that residential amenity, through possible or a cooking area impact, possible privacy or any of those other concerns. And then my final issue, tree protection. Drawing attention here to some of the existing trees, which you will have seen my aerial photograph here at the south. They are probably, they do make a contribution in the health of that conservation area. When the scheme first came in, the proposed extension of this area didn't cover a particular room protection areas. This revision that makes the scheme for the growths too, now moves the extension away from the room protection areas, but there is still a need to have the area protected. And so, there is a condition recommended for it, that tree protection measures, the exclusion zone around there are part of all the construction process. And just to say though, there they are there, one view taken from the application site in autumn and then another view again, you can see from the height that they do make a considerable impact. And then finally, I would like to thank you briefly to the addendum report. We did receive some comments regarding construction activity and the involvement. I'm aware that is not an issue to be considered, to be out of control of the planning application process. However, we are recommending, known to me, regarding how to build banks in construction and other materials constructing the equipment. And again, I want to point out all this, there is a tonne of junk capital to the property. So, we, there is opportunity there for anything to come off the road and according, what we accept is narrow road, or maybe a hundred something. So, that's on the addendum report, Chairman. And then finally, in terms of the two conclusions, the views here of the area, the design, despite it being such a large collection of extensions, the design, the impact of that on the conservation area, on the adjacent existing building, on the extension of the trees are subject to the conditions we're recommending for the central, therefore Chairman, who's recommending to you to work. Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for a detailed report. There are several issues that I would like to highlight where on the addendum about the public issues chasing right away, I would like to see that advisory to also cover the chapel services, which are mid-week and during the week, and that perhaps consideration should be given to the construction itself, perhaps ceasing what stills are going on. The other time would be school times for access. That is the second most major access point for the school, which isn't actually shown on the colour drawings. That's a playing field, that's a school playing field in the bottom left-hand corner. And as I say, school times, lots of children, so perhaps to avoid all school times for the construction traffic. Sink Street, which is the street that runs through Old Gate from the top there, I don't know whether they were actually consulted, but let's assume that the Wildlife Trust maintain and manage that ecosystem through the stream and along the banks. And there are certain special habitats down there as well, so it would be, it would be perhaps being only right. When we talk about the visual amenity, if one actually follows it down to the very bottom of the property, but across the major bridge into Old Gate, which is within the conservation area, they're looking straight up that garden and there are several properties there that just look straight up there at it. I appreciate that this needs one of the mitigating factor on that. Just a check. Oh, yes. Having looked at the spring in the southeast corner behind the chapel and coming to the decision it wouldn't have much impact, well, when they actually did the building, since after that, the initial building, after that and since, the egress and water from there has been much, much more to the extent of flooding all the path into the sink stream, pretty very, very dangerous in winter. There were also issues when we talked about the chapel. It wasn't so much with the chapel, but the brick extension at the back of the chapel where the stream comes out. They had issues then with having to re-point sort of that brick. It's not a brickwork or blockwork, it's just that new bit that's stuck on the back of the chapel itself. Bul Lane has been pointed out, it is very narrow. Has anything been noted regarding parking for what would obviously be extra people living in the house? Then, you know, has something made available? You can't park really on Bul Lane in the latter of the day to go past. And again, I agree with you having pointed out through the photographs that the different times of year, then the actual visual impact is very, very different. And we take it, take a mean average, then I do agree with finding that.
Thank you. Would you like to come back on the news, Mr. Campbell? Don't allow me reading, I know. Chairman, just to pick up on a few of those points. Yes, first of all, I'm going to be guarding my response regarding control of construction traffic. Of course, it can be an advisory that it's, and it can be controlled by planning system. However, members were minded to resolve to approve this scheme and wish some additions to that, and that would be appropriate at this moment. Regarding the user mounting views from the distance, yes, I do take the point, but given the distance and given the context of the views as well, with other developments in the area, then I don't think I could conclude that that view rear of the current application of proposals would be acceptable because of the impact on the conservation area. In terms of parking, there is very much room, as I've mentioned earlier, in the front carriage and I think that is adequate to cover any additional parking that might be generated by this extension being constructed. And in terms of the wildlife impact on the stream, I'm aware that the Wildlife Trust does have interest in the recreation around in the area and I'm not around there. Nothing specific was picked up during consultation on this application and therefore I can't agree with you. Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. You will come back, Mr. Campbell, yeah?
Yes, please, Chair. I would certainly like that when Mr. Fulson comes forward, that we do put an advisory or however it is actually worded regarding construction traffic. A photograph here of the last time that was done and you'll be able to get in and out there for four hours to access their own homes. Is that difficult to get, as usual, where to get down off Bul Lane and get round that little bit of a corner? So, I really think that the advisory is regards to school, advisory is regards to channel. But have we only ever issued advisories as regards to construction traffic?
I'm a little bit concerned about photographs being circulated. This is in a, I believe that we should actually take considerations, it has been presented to us.
I think you were correct. I was just taking the big on myself this morning.
Okay. Yes, I'm actually.
Indeed. I apologize on reserve that I didn't realise that was the case.
Certainly. Can they continue with your other point?
No, it was just that, that, you know, do we have any stronger way of managing the construction traffic? Because as we have perhaps in other areas with similarly difficult access.
I think I used it when I did the last members training, the slide up, when you're looking at material considerations. Well, I used the slide that was endorsed by CLG, it was not the government. And that said, it's not a planning matter. So, you have to set that aside. You may be concerned by it, but it's not something we're supposed to control.
Mr. Campbell, you'd be very pleased.
Thank you very much, Chair. Now, looking at planning assessment fully issues, pretend with the application effect on trees, only residential amenity. What I do have concern about is the introduction of such a large amount of flat roof, a little bit into the conservation area. And especially in proportion size to the actual building, that that's a large square metre roof and also the form.
What can I think about it? Yes, I think it's, but even if all on the right-hand side, where we, where then we have, we go from the main quality down to one, a flat roof, one story, and then up to a two-story, it doesn't seem, and I know by doing it one story, it sort of visages the residential amenity issues with it. That is why I'm concerned, it seems there would be roof lights, flat, kind of doing the roof lights on it. And that's my concern, is how we keep it, is it such a large extension of a flat roof in a conservation area?
Would you like to make a match?
Chairman, the comment about such an extensive flat roof, he's acknowledged. And in many conservation area situations, I don't think we can conclude and direct an action to you for approval. However, we will sometimes ask them, what is the impact on the wider conservation area and what is the potential harm that could be caused by this? And as I mentioned when I took you on a photographic tour around the site, whilst it is a large central flat roof, we don't feel it is visible from either the key location that shows you. Therefore, does it cause harm? No. Therefore, does it have that wider impact on the conservation area? Wider negative impacts? The answer again is no. So, coming back to my very first point about conservation area, at least it preserves either the main or enhanced character of the building.
Do you want to go back? Yeah. The issue I did my damn is preserve or enhance the conservation area. Preserve the swimming pool of the conservation area.
So, just a clarity, I'm a common bench, Chairman. What we would like to consider is whether or not the any proposal preserves or enhances the character of the eventual conservation area. And the point is that whilst we acknowledge it is a large area of flat roof, it at least preserves the character because it has no negative impact on it, possibly harmful to it. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't particularly like that extension with the front a bit, but could I ask about this swimming pool? Will we go back to the view of it before and after? I'd just like to know the height that the swimming pool will be. Would it impact on the windows of the church hall, church? Is it going to be higher than what's...
If I answer that, there's two slides at least, Chairman, stay on the existing.
Now, can they, you've got a view of it.
Indeed, yes, but I'd like to come to the main. Sorry. Just to give, make sure I could view and follow on. This is the plan view, so a flat roof extended side would be there, whereas then at the gap of the roof, we get to the church hall here. Yes, the church hall does have a series of windows here. They are at a reasonably high level, but if I can then go back to the proposed extension, we can look at the relationship to... I was going to take it slowly, not towards shoots.
Yeah, just at the bottom, as you said, it doesn't show the chapel there. Again, the windows there and they are south facing windows and is it, is it going to obscure the light from those windows?
Chairman, I'm afraid the technologies in terms of the existing phase scale, I'm just about to make out somebody who's really, that will show. I'm sorry. No, it is very faint, so it's not that, but the hard copy I have on the file does indicate the church hall here. Now, if you look at the windows there, those are the rest of the high level windows that I mentioned, look how they line up here to the side of the existing building. So, if we then start back and come across, then the lower part of those buildings will be lower than the flat roof of here. The remainder of the windows will be above it, but of course, they will be at distance.
Thank you. Mr. Fulson.
Yes, coming back to the point made by a ward member with regards to the spring, it is mentioned in the report that the Kepa Parish Council, the committee were concerned about natural spring in the southeast corner being affected by groundwork and the foundations of the chapel. The ward member did report that since the construction of this... And the war member did report that since the construction of this building from sixteen, they had had problems with the spring coming across the footpath. So are there any plans to do something with regards to drainage? Springs are notorious for springing up. I know we had the same problem in Uppingham, where developments have moved springs further down the valley. And I wouldn't want to see any increase in the flow of those springs as it was to the detriment of the neighbouring community as a result of this.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Overall, eighteen of the reports, the final part preferred us, the first that issue. And you can see that the case officer has undertaken a number of investigations. And we have to bear in mind that that area above the stream has streets being developed, as I had mentioned, in the swimming pool and the outbuilding. And so it is not as if we have a situation where there is ground that is perhaps allowing water to soak away. And now we're having hard surface that deflects water down towards the stream. So from the information in front of us, from a planning point of view, we feel that the current scheme is acceptable and would naturally appeal to the current concerns.
Well, I did read that point, but given the fact that it is freezing over in the winter and concrete is no substitute for earth. And if we're talking about putting more hard surfaces into an area where there already are issues with springs, I am concerned that it may very well have a different effect, or may increase the flow of the spring. There aren't going to be bigger buildings, there's a big difference between a swimming pool and a covered area, which is going to have footing to put in and everything else. So that's one thing that I must say that I am concerned about.
Yes, I think you're disassociating the fact that there may be an issue with the existing spring, because that's an existing problem caused by existing building, not this. The drainage from this building will be controlled through building regulations. And they will need to ensure that, whatever they do it through softwareized probability, that that works satisfactorily under building regulations. And that's how the drainage of roofs, et cetera, of this building will be done, that's for us.
Thank you. I will make that point, just for that point.
Thank you.
Can I be accused?
Of course, Mr. Parsons, yes. Would you sit my adjutant, my room to take that? Yes, I would adjutant, yes. Mr. Lee, you've got to be careful. Listen, Larry, sorry, I really stand on the wrong direction.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, no, you were just seeing sort of that picture, it doesn't bring any harm. The actual one I would, to me, the extent of change on the left-hand side is moving from a summer house in an open garden area to a one sort of the way of the property. And I would say the length would probably double the current build, maybe. You just, given to him on the committee, how many conservation areas, planning applications for this, as the keywords, he doesn't preserve or enhance it, I would say. There wouldn't be that many, I couldn't think of one-story. I have campaigned around Hetton a number of times, many large one-story extensions to a building, definitely of that extent. So I would, just hope that's all made in my, I will be watching for future.
Just to pull it.
Can I just clarify, so I think the term is in Sweden, I assume, to be, it says preserve or enhance. What the courts have done interpreting that is they use the word harm. So preserve doesn't mean leaving things alone as probably what most people think that word means. It actually means, does it actually cause harm? If it's neutral, then there's no harm. What we would have to choose to refuse it is what harm that causes to the conservation area. So you'd have to say, you know, it's probably in views from X. It harms because of its materials and they're visible from Y. You'd have to be clear on what that harm is. One of the difficulties I have, as we spoke again in last committee, I would need to go back to next committee. Because where we've been introducing harm in conservation area, we haven't been winning many of late. And that's one of the things I'll bring back to the committee. So I think I would be working on that, but I need to be very clear exactly what that harm is. Because we might need to explain that very clearly to an inspector where that position of harm comes from.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watson, are there any comments about the actual roofing on those flat areas? Are they going to be sort of like semi-natural?
Chairman, the outdoors will be able to see the roof, which is.
Well, I think we're debating, but sorry, Mr. King.
Chairman, what we said the application is this isolated two-story building. I don't understand why that been brought forward or why our officers. I'm not trying to keep it somewhere. It does produce a very unusual building. Except the fact that nicely, the flat roof of the rear of the chapel is not going to be seen. So except being the view of that harm, that that was building will be seen, one to nine of buildings. Can you see the floor of that two-story building, please?
That's the first four elements, but then I think I'll go with that. Was that nice there?
Well, I don't agree with this is a different combination to the slants of that. Or is it in some ways separate, living problem together? It does seem very strange, we'd be isolated from the main building. The normal circulation of the form we hardly can see on this committee, we're only in that for more than a dozen years. It would have been a dense main building, subservient. This is anything but, and it's standalone, looks incongruous to me. And not a good place to be. I just don't understand logic why we find that acceptable in this case.
Chairman, this was considered quite some detail by the case officer in discussion with some of his fellow colleagues. And our side position was just that, it does appear to be a strange way of extending the property. And it potentially does affect the commonwealth. We'll come back again to the point, Mr. Pullman, I wanted to go about analyzing the exact harm that any proposal may cause. Now, that two-story element there, maybe two stories, but it is lower in height than the two-story of the existing rear extension. It is then set further back from the building, so it could, if so, here is, if there might was a panacor, two of them. Then in terms of the direct impact, maybe on neighbours, and also on views from the conservation area that does extend into the main building. It is set back from the boundary, and it is, as I say, of lower height than the main garden area. And the only window there at first floor level is subject to the condition that we're recommending. So we went through the central process, as officers, before putting this recommendation forward. It's certainly not something you see very often, something that we wouldn't recommend to you without giving it that level of consideration. But again, coming back to the point, what is the direct harm that caused? And could a recent refusal be acted on those grounds?
Thank you very much, Mr. King. Any other comments from anybody, or I'll be at the stage where I can take a proposal, please.
What would you do?
Proposal refusal, do I have a second of that, please? No, that doesn't, sorry, if you, your second, do that. Yes, on grounds, please, Mr. King.
On grounds of this study visual of being true. Also, sorry, what's more to describe?
So to begin this, in my understanding, if we put visual amenity in, we could, I would be concerned with a visual amenity. And I believe is it, the impact on the neighbouring properties isn't significant. And I think we could be in danger of losing appeal on that, if we include it. My main concern is the effect on the conservation area, one-story man, as highlighted by Mr. King, the major form of the two-story element on the north of it. So I wouldn't want to widen it out too much in case they agree with us on one and then fold out on the other.
Are you continuing that, Mr. King?
I would be happy to withdraw the visual amenity.
So can we have it absolutely clear what we've got?
Can I just clarify, is the concern about the impact on the conservation area solely from the two-story elements of the rear?
The two-story element of the rear, and also the introduction of such a lot, one-story and.
So the amount of it.
The amount of it, yes.
So it's scale and height in broad terms.
The scale and the form of it as well, the form is included in the comments here.
Well, we have that proposal, which is due a second for refusal. All those in favor of that, please? And against? And exceptions? That duly falls, so may we have another proposal, Mr. Pullman, for approval? As for the office's report, do I have a second of that, please? Thank you, Mr. Mann. And all those in favor of that, please? And against? And exceptions? So that's just duly approved. And we just have the appeals report, which I'll ask Mr. Pullman to.